We all want to say.
You want to move on?
Yeah.
Closest meeting, City Council's order, June 16th, 2020, here at the Stefford County Annex. At this time, are there any additions to the agenda?
Did I, did you get my one exactly on there?
Yeah.
I just made a five minute second session.
No, I'm going first now.
Yeah.
Are there any other additions to the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any citizens comments this evening? Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, June 2nd, 2020, and a special meeting, June 11th, 2020. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Corporation ordinance, six dash sixteen, twenty twenty, in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents, and petty cash in the amount of four hundred and thirty-one dollars and eight cents. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, one abstain. Okay. Approved invoices over spending limits, Mansell Concrete Construction, billed for six thousand due to concrete costs going up. Five thousand eight hundred and fifty was original bid. Need approval for a hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department heads. Electrical Department, Jeff?
I don't have much. The underground is rerouted up at Allen's and the pole line's been removed. We're in the process of setting the pad mount transformer and that stuff, but most of it's done. We're trying to be helping Jason a little bit on the side, so we've completed about everything we're gonna complete, unless we have something major, so we're gonna try and start helping him on the street stuff and that here pretty quick, so.
Jeff, I was looking at the paper of Jamie's, and it's in our packets here, is a broken pole in light at Hempel. Well, what was, what happened there?
They were pulling flags and he clipped it with the bucket on the loader, but it was rotten anyway.
Okay.
So we're just waiting on the one call to come through and we'll change it out, that's it.
Okay, I was just curious, okay.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff? Moving on, Water Department, Jason?
On water, the wastewater, I tried to get a holding of the JCI on the pumps out there, and we're still, they're still holding the virus thing going strong, so delayed on that one some more. And as far as that, that's about it on the water and wastewater.
If I have any comments, concerns, questions for Jason? Moving on, Street Park Department, what do we got on that, Jamie?
Jason?
The main thing I was wanting to ask everyone here is about, I had made up those maps for everybody, if you remember there, here a while back, and they had all the color codes on them. I was wondering if you guys would think it'd be a good idea to go ahead, and the yellow part of it is to, let's go ahead this summer and get the county to help us get those yellow ones sealed, so we can get them fixed. They don't need plained. I figured it'd be a good time to get them done, because they're starting to get checkerboarded and start popping out little chunks here and there. So I was gonna go in there and see what you guys think, and we could seal as much as, as much as you guys will let me seal on those, and then just go ahead and start patching those and have them ready for the county to start sealing them. And then continue, a couple guys grinding, milling the street, and then start, just keep on going with the batching, as far as we can. I just hate to see those streets that don't need sealed start breaking away even worse than what they are. So if we can get those, get those done, because one of them's all a nutting, all a nutting is good to go, except for just a couple of spots, six feet on one side, just to mill out a little bit, and that's it. And if we can get that all done, that'll last another, what, five years, you know, six years, whatever. So that, I thought it'd be a good idea, go ahead and get that done.
What is your, what can your budget handle as far as, because you're letting us see how much we can do of the yellow, I mean, how much can you?
Well, I'm waiting on Phil. But another, the other thing I was wanting to know is what, I didn't know for sure what we could allow on our budget to spend, so that way I could say, we, Phil, we have a hundred and twenty thousand, or sixty thousand, so how much can I do with that right there? And that, it's either, but, it's, you know, either way, I, I didn't know if you guys could help me figure that out, and then I could just take it to him and say, hey, this is what the council's allowing me, what can we do with that on those? Because if he does, like, if he does all the yellow, we're looking at a pretty good chunk.
Yeah, I mean, it needs sealed, I mean.
Right.
It needs it.
If that's what you're, if you really want to wait on, I mean, I can get it, but he's, he's still hasn't got all the figures done yet, but he's got everything to get a, get the figures off, and so. Measurements, square footage.
Are you talking about sealing and chatting like they did on First Streets last year?
Yeah.
They need done, I mean, they haven't been done in a while, years.
Oh, yeah.
So, I guess, I have no idea, I don't have any numbers in front of me as what our budget has, or what your future, well, I mean, what, what do you have as far as milling? What are you gonna do, just finish West Street?
Well, the material, the material we have, I can't, yeah, I probably can't even fish, finish West Street until they bring us some more, so I was just gonna go until we can, until we run out and when they bring us some more.
What, what we spent last year, fifty thousand on material?
I thought sixty. Somewhere around that. Sixty.
How much did we get from them last year, when we looked at that invoice?
Oh, I don't remember. How much did we spend? We spent like twenty-eight on First Street, I think, in material, and then I think they charged us five thousand to do it, so right in the thirty range, or somewhere close.
Is that what it was?
I believe.
I thought we bought a little material.
We did buy material, but that was just the sealing cost there, and then we bought like five hundred and fifty, I think, at fifty-six or fifty-seven dollars, so that would've been another close to thirty.
Yeah, it was two digits, I guess.
Without looking at it, I think it's fairly close. See, a year before, we didn't buy any, so, because we carried it over, so.
I'd say we need to figure out how much we're gonna mill and spend there, and then how much we need to, what it's gonna cost to overlay, or seal everything.
I just don't know what our budget can handle. I, for some reason, I feel like we've been spending sixty thousand a year.
It's pretty close, I think, by the time you seal in your material both, yeah. The problem with West Street is, and on top of repair and all that, we've got about a hundred and forty or fifty foot of curb that needs to be replaced.
On top of that, yeah.
In order to do it, because we've got a half of one block that's just all but completely gone, and a catch basin on it too, so there'll be some fairly large expense there.
I think it needs to be done. Jason, can you work with Jamie and get some numbers and bring it to council next time, so we can have a better idea of what it's been possible, put some lines at ease, please?
Yeah, I'll try and get a little bill, maybe we can get a little out here.
Okay, alright. Anybody else have any more comments or concerns regarding that? Okay. Moving on. Have we heard anything from Grant Administrator, Lisa Cornwell? Nope? Okay. Alright. Moving on, Police Chief, Chief Addis?
Preston graduated the part-time academy, June 5th. Just found out today, Dustin will be going to the academy July 27th for fourteen weeks. October, we'll be getting our twelve hundred and fifty dollars from the Department of Transportation for Enforcement on Seat Belt and DUI Laws. Last week, we finished up and got Glenn certified nationally in both Narcotics and Control, so that's, that's all done. I sent you a paper out for in-car cameras. We have the body cameras, I think that we desperately need dashboard cameras in our cars, very few departments ever have them, you know, don't have them. I talked to everybody at the fore, kind of give a heads up on the DV1 for nineteen ninety-five, and it was used. Talked to the salesman today, he said, you know, you can go with it, he said it's fine. The thing is, it's a DVD and it goes in, they started making those back in two thousand and five, is when those came out. He said, so I can't guarantee you if they break, if we'll ever have parts to fix them or anything like that, and he goes, and DVDs are going to start getting really hard to find and picked up. The last option was the 4RE, and that is a new system, at forty-nine ninety-five, he could give a discount of two fifty, which for three, I mean, would be fourteen thousand dollars. County attorney, I will tell you, has added up, he will give them three thousand dollars towards the cameras, for the help of the purchase of them. I don't think we need the new 4REs. I do, however, think that the, the middle price there, the 4RE used, three ninety-nine, so the total would come to eleven nine eighty-five. With county attorney's three grand, we would be, we would have eighty-nine eighty-five to pay. I broke it down, you see in there, our equipment fund is forty-six, a little over forty-six thousand. At the end of the year, by the time we transfer our money, we'll be, we'll be about sixty-one thousand, a little more. I talked with Jamie today about the capital outlay, if we split it and we took half of it out of our PD equipment fund and half after the capital outlay, it'd be forty-four ninety-two out of each. And that would still leave us, at the end of the year, having fifty-six eight in our equipment fund for vehicles and anything like that, we're still, we're building that up, so. I'm just asking, I guess I'd like to see that we get three dash cams in the cars. One thing is, especially for canine, anytime I run the dog around a car, none of it's on video, because the body camera that we wear is on our chest and face is straight out, and the dog is down to the left, so it's never caught on video for cord or anything like that. We've already had one instance where we've had to go back and review footage of the body cam, and we eliminated a complaint there, because the officer had their body cam on. But, you have to click it on, wait for it to boot up, they're good cameras, I'm not getting rid of them, we will still always wear them and use them, but you have to turn it on, wait for it to boot up, and then hit the button twice. If you hit the button too soon, and then you go up and you make contact, it's not recording, but you don't know sometimes that it's not recording, unless you're looking down with all the lights and seeing that it's recording on there, you don't, you don't know, if you hit it too soon. I've done it, everybody does it, so. I just think that the in-car cameras will help us, especially in today's times, and I'd like to see us kind of move forward and get, get some dash cams in our cars to where we protect the officer and the public, both ways. The thing about it too, the 4RE, Sheriff's Department, theirs is a downloaded system, that was, that was what I thought, and I learned about these today, the DV1 was a CD that you put in. Sheriff's Department doesn't have that system, they have a different one, but they have to pull up to the back of the station, and it downloads onto a computer in there when they pull up in the back, but you have to pay for software, IT guys will set it up and fix it when it goes down, all of that. The 4RE is not a DVD system, but it has a lockbox in there, so that I would have a key, and you put a thumb drive in there, and it downloads all your video and everything from that onto your thumb drive, and then you can take it out and go. So, it's still a pretty good system, but we don't have the IT, we don't have any of that, that we have to deal with, of it going down, having problems with it not, because Sheriff's Department has a ton of problems with downloading all the time.
Right.
And we won't have that problem with the, with the thumb drive system.
Counsel, what do you think?
What's, from our conversation yesterday when you called me, what's changed your mind, I guess, on that DV1?
Just him talking about how hard, A, DVDs are gonna be to get here in the future, and he doesn't know when they're gonna stop, they just, they made these back in two thousand and five, so they're refurbished from them, and he doesn't know when it's gonna be that you can't even get parts for them anymore, if you needed to fix them. And I guess if I'm gonna spend two thousand dollars, I wanna be able to still get parts if something was to break, because if you have a two thousand dollar dash cam and a sixty dollar part breaks and you need to fix it, now you've got two thousand dollars for the boat anchor, and I just don't, that's what, that's what changed my mind on it. The video quality and all for the DV1 is great, I mean, I've used them before, down, by which, sorry, we all have them, but the 4RE, I think, is a lot better, after talking with him, but he said he understood, he wasn't trying to sway us any, any way, he just gave me the pros and cons of both, and then the new, and I just think that 4RE is the way to go, to keep something for long, not, not a short, expensive little fix, but a long-term deal. You know, the 4RE new, yeah, that'd be great, but I, I, you know, I'm not asking for that.
It's refurbished, right, you spoke, used, but it means refurbished?
Yeah, it's all refurbished, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, every one is refurbished from the company, and it's still, on the other sheet, you'll see, you can read through what all it comes with, and, and it still comes with the one-year factory warranty, which is what you get with a brand-new one too.
Okay.
So.
So would you just store it on thumb drives then?
Yeah, and then it'll go, yeah, and then it'll go into the evidence room and just be logged in there, and that way, if something ever comes up, court case or whatever, you go back and pull that thumb drive and you burn it on, on another thumb drive and take the cord with you.
That's installed?
Reinstalled.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The only thing, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll have to buy specific bracket, brackets for each vehicle, you know, but that's in it, you just, you have to tell them what brackets you need for what vehicle you have, so.
That was for the DV1.
The 4RE is a two-piece system that has a separate monitor, because they're newer and a lot of vehicles, he had told me today, a lot of vehicles have a fire suppression system up in the headliner, and that's why you have, some vehicles you can't mount the center, which that DV1 is all the center up the, the top of the roof inside your car. But with that, and, and airbags and stuff like that, it's sometimes hard, you can't put them in some vehicles that way.
But you're doing the install, you're putting them in?
Yeah, we're putting the install, it's just bolting them up and wiring them in, that's it.
So, I mean, that's pretty well a term key price, basically, besides the mounting?
Well, no, the, no, you give your bracket, you just have to tell them what vehicle, but.
Oh, okay.
Now, if we go with the 4RE, it's just an automatic bracket, there's nothing different. The only thing that gets mounted to the, to the roof would be the camera system, everything else will be down below.
A little bit leery about buying, used electronic, re-manufactured electronics, but you feel pretty confident. I'm, I'm just thinking twenty-two hundred dollar difference between new and used, like, how, how good's the warranty on the new stuff?
It's the same warranty, it's a one-year warranty on E1, you just get all brand-new components instead of, and if it was refurbished from, from just an individual, I agree, it's refurbished from the company, so I, I'll hold a little bit more stock into it being better.
Right.
I mean, I agree, the new one, you shouldn't have any problems, you know, I mean, do you stand to have a problem with a used one?
Right.
Yeah, but also looking at budget and what we can afford to get.
When you have a refurbished piece of equipment from the company itself, that usually goes through a stringent QA or quality assurance inspection before it goes up to the, for resale, so.
I mean, they have them on eBay for two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, but I don't wanna go spend two hundred and ninety-nine dollars on DVD system.
Yeah.
It's junk, and I'm back, so, yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, Counsel, what do you think?
I guess I'm okay with it, Paul.
I mean, that's what, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, your equipment fund is to purchase stuff like this, and I guess if you feel that this is what you need, I'm alright with it.
Yeah. I mean, and it's pretty standard to have dash cams.
There's very few departments anymore that don't have them, it's just a huge liability thing.
Yeah.
You know, on a car stop or anything, you can see the other side of the vehicle where the body camera, you're only seeing what the officer, and like most of the time when we're talking to somebody out in front of, in between cars or something, and you've got your body cam on, all you're seeing is their, their chest, if you're up, you know, times are close, so you, you can't even see the face, because it's just shooting straight out in front of you. So, yeah, I think they're important. And I'm, I'm just wanting, you know, if you've got nothing to hide, you don't mind anything being on video, so, you know, put it on there and let it be out there, so.
So, I guess I'd motion to approve Allen to get the 4RE used, to a cost of eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Capital outlay, you guys okay with that?
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Capital outlay, capital outlay.
Yeah, minus three thousand dollars coming from the county attorney, so, yeah, okay.
So, I mean, your, your department will be at forty-four ninety-two, fifty?
Right, yeah. I figured it up as to the end of the year, of where we're sitting at in that, with the fifteen thousand rollover that we have that goes into that fund for us, and that's why I came up with the fifty-six eight twenty-five, was at the end of the year, you know, I was looking at end of year, when we're done with everything, so.
Okay.
Yeah, because it'd be forty-four ninety-two coming out of each fund.
Okay.
Okay, so any more, any more discussion? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, Chief Senator's not here, do we have anything from him, Jamie? City Administrator, Jamie?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns for Jamie?
I guess my only thing, what we can get with the mosquito spray, have any idea, or anything?
A mosquito spraying?
Okay.
When I had asked him, it had been too windy, so, we're waiting on the wind. Kyle had talked to me a little bit about spraying the weeds in the square, and it's been too windy for that as well, so.
Were you, did you, were you gonna take that test for spring?
Yeah, I'm trying to, so, the city, I have the three applications, Jason, myself and Allen are gonna look at taking it. Right now, I'm trying to find the city's numbers, like the license number to be able to, to apply for it, so.
Okay.
I've been emailing them the last week, so.
Okay, keep on, just know what goes up. Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns for Jamie? Moving on, City Attorney, John?
I just have an issue for my executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Alright. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John? Moving on to old business, is there anything on old business besides the two ordinances that we need to discuss? Okay, let's go with the ordinance, ten seventy-two dash twenty noise.
Do you want me to briefly explain, do you want me to briefly explain that ordinance?
Please.
Essentially, this ordinance would enact a prohibition against certain noises, and there's, there's really two different types, noises that are excessive and noises that cause interference, annoyance, or distress. The ordinance provides a definition for excessive ordinances, I'm sorry, excessive noise related to, depending on which zone, residential, commercial, industrial, parks that you're located in the city, but I believe from talking to Allen that the main concern is noises that may cause annoyance, distress, or disturb the peace and comfort of a nearby resident, or a nearby individual. Your quintessential noise disturbance would be like a boombox or a car stereo, something of that nature. Don't, is it, you're intent to buy something to record?
No, no, we were just, I was just looking at a, you know, even at this, just to get estimation, like a fifty-foot rule, or something like that. I mean, I know there's that decimal deal, and yeah, we could get decimal meters, but I've worked with those before, and it's, they're kind of, they're kind of a pain.
Yeah, so, so like a loud party, something of that nature is what this is, what this is intended to do?
The nice, the thing, the nice thing about, like, for that is, like I explained to you guys last time, if it's us that catches it and finds it, we don't fall under the disorderly conduct rule. If, if Isaii calls in about another party, then we could go with disorderly conduct with him, but we can initiate that if nobody else calls, because we don't fall under, as a law enforcement officer, we don't fall under the disorderly conduct. Same thing as if I was yelling at him, that would be disorderly conduct, but if he's yelling at me while I'm looking it, I don't get the disorderly conduct unless somebody else is around, somebody else has to hear it and complain about it in order for it to be a disorderly conduct. So that's kind of why we were just looking at with the loud music and stuff like that, was that we could enforce it before we even get a phone call, instead of just driving around and saying, well, hopefully somebody will call in.
There, there is some exception for construction between seven and teens, I don't know if council wants to look at that, and whether that times, those times are sufficient, or whether that needs to be amended. And there's some other exceptions, excuse me, lawn maintenance, repair of personal used, personal used vehicles, and home repairs.
I know Ross has brought up the deal, you know, with tractors and stuff like that, and that's not what we were after, it's just basically the parties, loud music, stuff like that that's going on at night, it had nothing to do with, with vehicles or anything like that, driving, or tractors, semis, none of that, that's not what we're after.
As we're through this, I'm okay with what you've got on this, how the rest of you feel on council?
Yeah, it looks, yeah, if I hit, just, it's something to fall back on if you have to, absolutely.
Is that?
So, it's, like, if somebody wants to mow the lawn, from seven to ten, basically?
If somebody wants to mow the lawn, really, if they wanna mow the lawn in the middle of the night, they'd still be okay under section four?
I would just change the time to six to ten.
For the construction?
I mean, rougher start, early, early, if somebody wants to complain about that in the future, I would just wanna change that to six o'clock to ten p.m.
Weekend amendment, in passing amendment, if you guys want, if you guys feel?
I was gonna say, I mean, there's time to know, I'm at six in the morning, it looks.
Quite a few people that get a, get an early start on things, I don't see a problem with that.
I guess the only thing I could see that might be a problem, so if when we allowed the Fourth of July from eight a.m. to twelve p.m., what, what happens after ten p.m. at night?
Won't that fall into an exception, because we've passed?
What, what was the?
The council passed the fireworks?
What was the time on fireworks?
Eight to midnight.
Eight to midnight?
Yeah, the, the time constraints are only related to construction. So, any, if, if somebody complains that there's construction going on, like on Allen's house, and it's, and it's causing excessive noise, or it's done purposely to annoy or distress his neighbor, then he can annoy and distress his neighbor all he wants between seven and ten, for the construction.
What I'm saying is, like, on the Fourth of July?
It, it would, it would not, it would be allowed on it, under a separate ordinance, or in that case.
So, when we allowed to have it on the third and the fourth, from eight to midnight?
As long as those are the hours the council chose for fireworks, it's not going to conflict with the ten?
Because I can just see some people in this town calling at ten o'clock on the third, saying, hey, they're shooting fireworks up, and you just pass the noise on them.
It, it would be a defense to the noise ordinance, I guess, isn't that's what I'm describing.
Is that a separate deal? That's something you, it is, it's no different than the noise ordinance of having Jubilee.
Right.
And you having a band out there for Jubilee, I mean, that would be the exception to the noise ordinance, because it was.
I'm just getting clarification out there.
You worried?
I'm not worried. But, but you guys would be the ones that would have to deal with that.
There will probably would be some that would fall. There will probably would be some that would call, that's a given.
Yeah, I agree.
I have no issue with it, I just want to address it upfront, I think the noise ordinance is first upon.
The time constraint is only construction.
Right, right.
There's no time constraint any other time, for any other reason.
Right.
That's not the only time.
But not everybody reads this whole thing and they would look at it at that.
Right.
Right, so get it out front, get people notified and informed, that's the best thing to do right now. So, having said that, can I get a motion to approve ordinance number ten seventy-two dash twenty noise ordinance?
Are we just gonna change the time as a later?
Yeah, I mean, as amended, but, well, first of all, there needs to be a vote to amend it to six o'clock and then there needs to be a separate vote to pass the amended one.
Okay. I make a motion to amend ordinance number ten seventy-two dash twenty, I mean, there's construction to change the time under four I to the hours of six a.m. to ten p.m.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries.
And then I think a motion to approve ordinance number ten seventy-two dash twenty as amended. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to ordinance ten seventy, excuse me, ten seventy-one dash twenty house numbers.
Sorry, the only issue in this ordinance is whether you guys think those dates under section two E are reasonable, July thirty-first and August thirty-first.
They wouldn't see it in their city bill, probably would be inserted in their city bill and they would have time to look at it and get the information if you need the sums.
If they they respond by July thirty-first, the city of St. John will provide free of charge numbers to each individual that meets that deadline?
The other option is to set a budget and say, we'll provide numbers up to a certain amount or a certain number of numbers, so you guys can control what you're spending on that kind of first come, first served basis.
How many meters do we have in town?
Eight hundred.
Huh?
Eight hundred. So, give it a day.
I, that's what I asked Jamie, but she said time, everybody's gonna ask for a minute, because I mean, those are, that's gonna be a lot of money.
That's what I was trying to figure.
Yeah, I mean, I, if I did numbers, I think I ran six hundred meters, it was like thirty-five hundred or so, three numbers on an average of like...
So, I guess my question, my business, I've got a big sign on the front of my building and it has four-inch tall letters that has my address, do I need to replace them?
No.
Or is that sufficient?
It's already marked, that, there's, there's not gonna, I mean...
The issue is if the numbers are less than four inches.
And not, like, we have a lot that aren't even thick.
Right.
Yeah, so if you have them and they're visible over four, or at least four inches, then it won't be, like, they won't even be requested, that's why I told Isaii that going off of the number of meters wouldn't really give us an accurate number. Alan, do you have, no, what's up, like, an average of how many you've seen without house numbers if you paid?
More than half.
More don't have it then?
Probably don't have it.
A lot of empty houses.
Yeah, yeah, they are, but I would say more than half either don't have it or you absolutely cannot read it or see it or nothing, but that's in over fifty percent of the city.
As far as, what do you call it? Enforcing this? I mean, what are we looking at there, John? I can see the the consequences right there, but what would happen if they don't do it after a year?
If they don't do it within the timeframe set, I suppose law enforcement could write a note, a notice to appear in municipal court.
It'd be busy.
I think it's a pretty important thing to do.
Yeah, it is.
What funds would this be coming out of?
We can take it out of the one percent, or we can take it out of the capital outlay.
What's in capital outlay, or I guess before his, do you know roughly?
Probably sixty-five, I think, roughly, I think there's thirty-five in one, thirty-nine. And we can do, we can do different numbers too, like I can find.
Because I can, I almost, you know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a large majority. What's the thing on your, of numbers, can they pick the colors, can they, they pick all that or does it just want standard color?
This just says that the numbers shall contrast with their background.
So, what, so I guess what I'm asking then, so if people have to go and buy them, they just bring a receipt in and they get reimbursed for them?
No, if they want them, if they want them, the city will buy them and provide them for them.
They need to come in by Jul-, by July thirty-first.
Why does it know if it's a, if it's just one color or something that you guys doing or just a couple of colors that you're doing, you know, then you're gonna have some people that won't come in because they're gonna go buy their own because they want a gold one up or they want those, and that's why I'm saying, so you're gonna eliminate some that are going to get their own.
I think if the city does it, you just offer black and that's it.
Yeah.
It's breaking.
Yeah, I mean, if they want to paint them different colors, let them paint them, but...
I mean, I just took on that, there's like, if we have four hundred, if it's say half a meter, four hundred of them came in, if you're thinking half, that's three dollars for three digits, it's thirty-six hundred. I mean, it's not gonna break our capital outlay, that's where I'd probably pull it from.
I think it's pretty important for mercy responders that go house to house.
Yeah.
It's very important to get their...
I do have a proposed amendment. Under subsection E, if we could add where it reads, home and business owners may turn in their address on a form prepared by city staff to city hall, we could add that clarifying language so that we don't have people dropping notes through the door, sending Facebook messages in.
I'm okay with that, it's a good idea. Yes.
So, what was that again, John, second?
You're adding the language, "on a form prepared by city staff."
Oh, just adding "on a form"?
Correct, so they're gonna, they're gonna create a form and the individual, the property owner can fill out that form in order to get the the free address numbers.
Your motion was for the ordinance itself, or for the amendment?
To amend the ordinance, ten seventy-one dash twenty. To have the city office make a form.
Okay.
To fill out, basically for the numbers, correct, John?
Correct.
Okay, have a motion, do I get a second on that?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Okay, can you get a motion, ordinance to approve, ordinance number ten seventy-one dash twenty as amended?
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we want to take both then off of there, or do we want to leave the house number one on there, kind of check on it down the road? Get the house number one. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see how much, so we can take the noise ordinance off together and all.
Okay, any other topics under old business you want to discuss? Okay, anything for new business? Moving on, executive session, we have a ten-minute executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to non-elected personnel, who would we want in there?
And I think we could probably just do five.
Do five minutes?
Instead of ten, yeah. Just us, isn't it? Council mayor, clerk for administrator, attorney.
Second. Yeah, a motion and a second, all in favor say aye? Motion carries, we'll resume at seven forty-six.
Something different.
Call this meeting back to order. Okay, we have another five-minute executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to non-elected personnel matter, do we want the same people in the, in here? Okay. I have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries, we'll resume at seven fifty-two. Call this meeting back to order. We now have a ten-minute executive session to discuss property pursuant to attorney-client matter, you want everybody around here?
Yes, please.
Submove.
Okay, second, have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll resume at eight oh two. Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add a ten-minute executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to non-elected personnel matter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries.
Before we go in, I just got a text message from Stephanie and said that she needs to visit with me about the pool, we've got what I hope is not a bigger problem, do you want me to come to the council meeting? Can you help me to have her come here or talk to her tomorrow? Oh, she is?
Tell her she'll have to wait ten minutes or fifteen?
Fifteen. We'll take care of this one and Alan, someone can take care of that.
Okay.
I would, I'd make a motion, we've done that.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion for ten-minute executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to non-elected personnel, include council, mayor, city administrator, attorney, case.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll resume at eight fourteen. Call this meeting back to order, you want to make it or you?
Yeah, we're, oh, yeah, I'd make a motion to give Jason Wyatt a pay raise from twenty-three eighty to twenty-six dollars and eighty cents for maintaining parks, streets and parks department as well.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion for five minutes? Three minutes?
Two minutes, one minute and a half.
Non-elected personnel or?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that all we need, John? Non-elected personnel?
Yeah, guardian police department.
I have a motion on table for a second, okay, a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries, we'll resume at eight eighteen. Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to increase press endemic as part-time police officers paid from fourteen dollars to fourteen fifty.
I have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, so just open meeting, Stephanie?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add some more discussion.
Second, have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let us have it.
Okay, what you got?
Well, today I noticed that behind the, on the deep end, near the guard stand down there, about two years ago, they had a leak back there and I think it's back, and there's pretty good steady stream, I just talked to Jason in the hall, I told him there's pretty good steady stream running from there down into the drain. I waited till the kids all got gone today to make sure that it wasn't just kids splashing water up there and that's what we were getting, but it's running pretty good. Last time when they fixed it, they had to dig up all that concrete back there and replace something down inside, I don't remember what it was. We did keep the pool open at that time, we just partitioned it off, so if you went off the boards, you had to go around the other side, the north side versus the south. But I don't know if the wind blowing like it is, I don't, I don't know, so Jason's gonna meet me down there tomorrow, I just talked to him in the hallway about seven, seven fifteen, and he said the chlorine pump got fixed and so they're gonna get that back in tomorrow first thing in the morning too. But I told him that now for some reason, the intermediate pool and the baby pool are gaining water and I have no clue why. So, if, I told him if he got a phone call tonight that the pools were overflowing, it's, I don't know what to tell him, I don't know what's coming from, I have no idea, so.
But it's not coming out of the big pool?
No, the big pool's not going down.
It's must be great.
Keep, keep same levels, big door, right, intermediate pool?
Uh, we were losing water, I just told Jamie the other day, we were losing water in the big pool and in the intermediate pool, probably three to four inches in the big pool every day, about two to three maybe in the intermediate pool, so it wasn't a big deal, I could keep the levels pretty much where we needed them by just topping it off each day. But now I don't, Jason had given me a new T-piece to open up a valve that we thought was a suction to the baby pool today, and so I opened that and then we started all of a sudden gaining water, but I shut it and it still looks like we're gaining water, so I told him he might get a call in the middle of the night that the intermediate pool's overflowing, I don't know what to do about it. Everything's shut, it shouldn't be, there should be nothing going through there right now, so.
Well, it looks like you gotta take care of the issue tonight, I mean, as far as you can tell with Jason.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, so, but that was my thing, I wanted to let Jamie, I thought, well, you guys were down here, so I didn't know if, what we needed to do, but definitely gonna, I mean, they'll have to come in and do something probably with it, because eventually it'll just start sinking again back there, last, last time they fixed it, it was sinking pretty bad where the guard stand was almost sloping down in it, so I don't know what they'll have to do to replace it this time.
I guess my suggestion is if they have to, you know, mend it and get it tore out and get it fixed? Yeah. The sooner the better.
Right.
If you get too much water leaking under that concrete, you could have a big accident, big issue right there.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it to us.
Sorry, I just knew you guys were here and I thought, do you want me to come now or do you want me to just talk to Jamie in the morning, so?
No, that's that west, like the southwest corner of the big pool.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was so I could hear it today on the nights, when I was on the stand, on the high stand, you could hear the water running, I was like, oh dear, so.
Okay, alright, thanks, Steph.
Thanks.
Okay, having no more business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned.